All right, I think we are all here. So good evening. I would like to call the city council meeting for Tuesday, March 17, 2022 order. And could we have attendance, please?
All council members are present. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And then we will have the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask our former interim city manager and now police chief Max Bazell to lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Before we get into our business, I wanted to just make a few comments in light of the situation that we are here today. And as we all know, tonight, we are meeting under extraordinary circumstances. Today, the city of Mountain View, along with the rest of the world, is experiencing an unprecedented public health crisis of the likes none of us in this community, I believe, has ever experienced. The coronavirus, COVID-19, was first detected in China in December 2019, and since then has been declared a global pandemic by the World Health Organization, sickening and infecting more than 185,200 people in at least 140 countries. And here in Santa Clara County, as of yesterday afternoon, there are a total of 155 confirmed cases resulting in the prohibition of mass gatherings, the cessation of all nonessential travel, school closures, mandatory telecommuning for many public and private sector organizations, and finally, the issuance of a shelter-in-place order for all individuals living in Santa Clara County and six other counties in the San Francisco Bay Area to show the communities -- to slow the community spread of COVID-19. I understand that many people in our community are experiencing uncertainty in the light of these recent actions. Please know that we, the City Council, with our entire city organization, are working with our partners in the nonprofit and public sector, as well as private sector, as well as our colleagues in neighboring jurisdictions, our state and congressional elected officials, and with the city organization to identify needs, resources, and services for our community and to ensure the health and safety of all Mountain View residents. I'm pleased to introduce, and unfortunately, in these circumstances, but to welcome our new City Manager, Kimber McCarthy, who we will swear in officially shortly, but she officially joined us two weeks ago and has hit the ground running, especially in light of our current situation. I'd like to ask her to share with everyone what the city has been doing to address the concerns and the needs of our community. Welcome, Kimber.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you and the community with an update on the city's response to the emerging crisis at hand. We are in extraordinary times, and I want to assure you that we have an extraordinary team that has risen to the challenge and is responding to this crisis. For the past two weeks, city staff has worked tirelessly, even on nights and weekends, to respond to this crisis. Of utmost priority to us is to maintain the health and safety of our employees and residents. To that end, we've taken several actions to respond to the public health directives. On Friday, March 6, in response to the Santa Clara County Health Department, we postponed or canceled large community gatherings. The city proactively took steps to cancel all citywide community events and recreation programming through the end of March. Last Thursday, March 12, in response to the World Health Organization Declaration, a declaration of a state of emergency was issued for the city of Mountain View. This emergency declaration allows the city to mobilize resources and reduce regulatory barriers so that we can react and make decisions quicker, as well as provide us with the ability to request mutual aid from other local, state, and federal government agencies. This action ensures that critical services have the resources needed to continue and allows the city to request mutual aid for other government entities as well. Last Friday, March 13, in response to the public health order prohibiting mass gatherings of more than 100 people, also halting gatherings of 35 to 100 people, and countywide school closures for three weeks beginning March 16, the city took additional actions to cancel all remaining citywide programming, close facilities, and began to transition our workforce to telecommuting from home. I formed a crisis communication response team under the direction of Deputy Police Chief Chris Young to centralize citywide communication to the public and to the community. Then just yesterday, in response to the Public Health Department issuance of a countywide stay-in-place order directing all individuals living in the county to shelter in their place of residence, I notified employees that effective today, the city of Mountain View would be closing all facilities of nonessential services in an effort to stop the spread of this virus. Throughout this period, the city has worked closely with our partners in both Santa Clara and San Mateo Counties, and also throughout the Bay Area. We've worked with school districts and community-based organizations and agencies to not only understand what is currently occurring in our community, but also share resources, best practices, learning lessons, and support each other through this crisis. As of this evening, all Mountain View facilities have been closed, with only essential services being provided to ensure health and safety. The Emergency Operations Center has been partially activated to monitor events as they unfold and to prepare us in the event that a full activation is necessary. It is my hope that all of these actions, while difficult and unprecedented in the course of Mountain View's history as a city, will assist the greater community in which to live to slow the spread of this virus and protect the most vulnerable of those among us, and ensure that Mountain View's greatest assets, our people, our residents, our businesses, are protected. So thank you for the opportunity to respond, and we do have three department directors here to give us an update about the essential services that are being provided.
Thank you. And who would like to start? Chief, Fire Chief? Thank you.
Good evening, Juan Diaz, Fire Chief. The Fire Department continues to respond to emergency medical calls, but we have modified our responses. First, I'll tell you that firefighters are being health screened every morning at the beginning of shift. We take their vital signs and their temperature, as well throughout the shift. We implemented procedures in the fire stations, which includes, while the building is open to the public in the event of an emergency, we're not allowing visitors just to drop in and visit as they've done in the past. Firefighters have PP, the personal protective equipment that they wear. We leave in that in the apparatus bay, and we're not allowing that to enter into the living quarters, so firefighters are switching right there. As you know, EMS and healthcare providers, we're at the front of all these calls that are occurring. We had one member, as you might have heard, that was tested and came back as negative, so that was really good news. We have activated, as it was mentioned by the City Manager, the EOC. In fact, today, we have planning and logistics working together. They have drafted an incident action plan in the event that it needs to be activated. Planning and logistics today requested over 24 items from the Santa Clara EOC to supplement the equipment that we need in the city of Mountain View. At the fire stations, as I mentioned, we've taken some procedures. One of the things that we're also doing is a deep cleaning every morning. The outgoing shift cleans the entire station and throughout the day, and then the oncoming shift also performs those tasks. Are there any questions that you may have on any of these items?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Bozell?
Good evening, Council. Max Bozell, former interim City Manager, serving as your police chief. Our focus right now is continuity of operations. We've modified department objectives around four primary areas, and those include maintaining order, providing for the health and welfare of our staff, assisting with communications for public risk and crisis communication, as well as finalizing potential planning around response to other pandemic-related issues that law enforcement may have to focus on. We've been in contact with El Camino Hospital. We're preparing for potential surges in patients to the facility with site security involving the facility there. And we've been in contact with local retailers and grocery and food establishments, just getting an assessment of what their supply chain is, as well as potential problems around the fear of the situation. So our calls for service are sustaining at a normal level. We have prioritized our response to more mission-critical, frontline response to in-progress events. We've modified our response to less priority calls to include telephone and online reporting, discouraging face-to-face contact, but we're still providing a full range of services. We have suspended discretionary parking enforcement, as well as some other lower-priority services and community engagement, and will continue to monitor and adjust as the situation evolves. We have not had any reported exposures by staff. We hope that to continue, but we do have plans in place in the event that we do either have a suspected or actual exposure to an employee.
Thank you. Any questions, Councilmembers? Yes, Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions, and I'm not sure who best would be prepared to answer these. My understanding is that the governor directed cities to house their homeless populations. Is that a responsibility that the county is taking on? Is that something we're actually doing? And where are these folks being housed?
I don't have an answer for you on that, and that is not a part of our mission profile at this time. We are encountering a number of homeless individuals on the street, but it's normal day-to-day contact. Most of them are not in congested areas, and we don't have the resources, other than what we normally do in referrals to community services or local shelters.
And I think Assistant City Manager will be speaking next, so she might be able to answer some more of those questions. Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah, if you have to transport somebody, are your officers doing it, or are you calling in like an ambulance, or how are you moving them around?
For non-medical calls, if we're booking someone into jail, we're transporting them.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Any other questions for the chief? No? Thank you very much. And we now have our Public Works Director, Don Cameron. Welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Yes, Don Cameron, Public Works Director. So on Public Works, what we're focusing on is, first, to be prepared to respond to any urgent or emergency public service needs using duty staff and on-call staff. For example, things that happen infrequently, but they do happen, and we want to be able to respond to them should they happen during the closure, is water main breaks, sanitary sewer overflows, roadway hazards, emergency permits that PG&E or another utility may need to restore service. We'll be set up to respond to those as and if they come in. We're also monitoring Ask Mountain View, our phone lines, as well as our department emails for any urgent issues that may come through that way, traffic safety-related, street lights out, and so on. We're also focused on maintaining our regulatory requirements and priority operations. Examples of these include our daily and weekly water quality testing to keep in, one, the regulatory requirements, but also continue to ensure our residences that, you know, our water is the quality that we expect it to be. Landfill closure monitoring with twice-weekly onsite inspections. Our street staffs, at least once a week, is going to be doing street nighttime inspections, just looking again at streetlights, potential hazards in the roadways, so that we can be proactive in responding. We're also working with ecology for any special service requests that may come in from our businesses or residents for their needs. Our department also works hard to support other departments as they provide their essential services. We will have two to three fleet mechanics on duty to continue to service police, fire vehicles, and other city service vehicles that are in use during the closure. We have our facility techs on-call to respond should any of our buildings have an issue that need immediate response. For instance, unfortunately, we had one of our elevators out today in City Hall, but we got it fixed today with our on-call staff. And we also are going to perform daily building checks. Now, we're going to have a lot of facilities where no staff is present at all, all day long, and we just want to make sure that everything's fine, there's no water leaks, nothing happening. So our one facility staffers and we'll be going around and visiting all buildings every day to make sure everything's okay. In terms of our other Public Works projects, for our construction and permit projects, we are suspending all but one construction project by tomorrow. That means buttoning down the sites, making sure there's any rain or storms, they'll be fine, so that we do not have to have our inspection staff out there, that we don't have construction workers out there. So all of those projects will be suspended by tomorrow. We have one project under construction that's at a critical point. According to the structural engineer, we have to finish a certain amount of work before it's safe to suspend it. That is the Shoreline Sewer Pump Station. We expect to complete that work by the end of this week, and then we will suspend that project. We've also notified all permitees that we need them to suspend their projects and actually talking to them by phone, confirming that they are doing so, they are stopping work because we're not planning to provide inspection services. And then for all our engineering, Transportation Administration staff that are not providing essential services and functions, they are working from home, they'll do their best to keep projects and studies continuing and handling day-to-day operations, to the extent feasible, but we know some of that is going to slide. Additional service news, we are continuing to have the Community Shuttle operate. It does serve three medical areas and several grocery stores, and public transit in general is considered an essential service. However, we have closed the Ecology Buyback Center for the time being, just to avoid having another place where the public is congregating. And that's my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Director Cameron? Yes.
Sorry. Thank you. I also had heard that building affordable housing was considered an essential service by the state, so are we also halting all affordable housing-related activity?
Again, I think I'm going to have to turn to another department to respond to that. A lot of the affordable housing building itself might be related to building permits, which is handled by CDD. Some of these affordable housing projects may have off-site improvements required on the public street system and so on, and that would be suspended, but I do not believe any of those projects are at a critical point where we would be delaying their opening in terms of at least the public right-of-way side of things.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Could I ask Assistant City Manager if he could answer Councilmember Ramirez's question?
Certainly. The county is the lead agency around looking at shelter capacity, as well as other needs of unhoused folks as a priority population, and our city staff is in coordination with them, looking at opportunities to extend shelter capacity, as well as providing hygiene services. We have today identified that we can add a porta potty and handwashing station, an additional one at Rangestorf Park, through that collaboration with the county. We're also talking with them about mobile health services for unhoused and vulnerable populations. A number of other collaborations that I can talk about, if interested the council, with regard to the senior folks and medically vulnerable folks who have limited access to nutrition services, and that that's expected to be an increasing issue if the number of tests go up, and therefore, the number of quarantines go up, and folks can't get out of their house. So that's being collaborated across the county, and our staff is working with the county and with our CBOs on that, as well as our ongoing efforts to expand safe parking sites through the outreach of RHRC and Supervisor Semidion. And as the council knows, just on your consent calendar, you'll be considering the 24/7 services at Shoreline Lots, so continuing to serve folks through the Safe Parking Program.
Thank you.
There's another question here from Councilmember Hicks.
So I actually am interested in a little more detail on several of the things that you just mentioned. The first is a little more detail on what a mobile sanitary station, is that the term you use, what that is?
It's a, there are porta potties that have handwashing stations and even separate handwashing stations, and we already had, I think, both an ADA, or maybe that was at our safe parking site. We had at least one porta potty at Rangestorf already, and we are able, through county resources, to expand that and to also include a handwashing station.
And then I'm also interested in several of the other things you mentioned, in particular, the work you'd be doing with Supervisor Semidion in the county on, I know he has come the work you'd be doing with Supervisor Semidion and the county on, I know he has contacted all of us about extending, about finding more safe lots, but if you have any more detail than what he's provided to council, I assume you were CC'd on that email, but if you have any more detail, and also whether any of them would be 24/7?
I don't have any additional detail. I don't know that any commitments came, at least as of yet, out of that outreach, those outreach meetings, or out of the HRC's outreach. It's just an ongoing effort. We are in conversations with the county, not only about the Shoreline Lot as a 24/7 location, but their interest in providing 24/7 services at other locations, and we don't have any further developments on that as of yet.
Okay, was the VTA Lot mentioned?
The Lot on Evelyn is, as a city-controlled Lot, one that we could have a similar lease agreement with the county, if that were council's direction to do.
Okay, and then my last question. I'm the liaison this year to Avenueus, which provides services to seniors in the area, and they were particularly interested in the last meeting I went to and what you just mentioned, stepped up, call it what you will, meals on wheels or meal delivery, and we brainstormed a little about that, so I'd like to hear whatever details you have on that.
Yeah, so on Kimber's behalf, I participated today on a call with the City Managers Association Group for all of the city managers in the county, and learned about a major initiative that they are facilitating through the leadership of the City of San Jose to increase nutrition services specifically for the vulnerable populations impacted by COVID, the people 65 and older, and those with medical conditions. And there are a range of different priorities and things they're looking into, including looking at the supply chain and the food distribution network, making sure that if there are issues there, they're addressed, looking through the existing partners, CBOs like Second Harvest or like CSA, to make sure that they have the supplies of food that they need, but also looking to expand those partnerships in a significant way with the private sector. And then finally, to look at more mobile delivery for folks who can't leave their home. They are urging senior centers like ours that have nutrition programs to continue to provide that nutrition, but really to look at ways to do so within the public health guidelines, which, you know, become even more kind of curbside delivery. So really looking at all of the aspects of that delivery.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I could actually add to that. I'm going to be participating tomorrow at a press conference that Mayor Sam LaCarta is putting on regarding this concerted effort to provide more nutrition services to seniors, so I'm happy to share with you what I learned there. And then personally, actually, I've been getting calls in restaurants. Some of our restaurants have food that they've bought for the month, so I've been able to connect them with Second Harvest Food Bank, so we're working on that delivery and whatnot. So those are things that, and I was going to mention that in my comments about what we can do to-
Okay, I'll save the rest of my comments for them.
Okay, thank you. Do we have, Community Development Director, do you have an answer for Councilmember Ramirez about affordable housing projects?
So while City Hall is closed, we are having our folks telecommute, and we've got permatechs who are coming every so often to pick up plans and review them, so we are keeping on top of that. We are also informing all of our applicants about the delay. At this time, we're not offering inspections, but I'm happy to connect with our city attorney to figure out, and also see if you have any requests from affordable housing developers, to see if there's anything that we need to give priority over.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions from councilmembers for any of our department heads? If not, thank you, City Manager, and thank you to all of the department heads for being here and for informing us on what the city is doing, and I hope that the residents are now assured that we are working at top speed to respond to the many concerns and needs we're hearing from folks. And I personally have been fielding, I think we all have, been fielding phone calls and emails, and I appreciate the way our community is coming together to address the situation. This is the greatest challenge our community has faced, and I'm buoyed by the compassion our neighbors are showing to each other, and it makes me confident that we will get through this, as long as we stay united and work together. If folks are looking for ways to help, and we talked about the food bank, but please consider donating to our many nonprofits that are helping those most vulnerable in our community. We are also looking at ways to assist our small businesses and encourage everyone to support them by patronizing them if they offer takeout, maybe delivery services of ice cream and other foods, or by purchasing gift cards to be used at a later time. Every bit counts, and it'll take all of us working together, but I know we will be able to weather the storm if we stand united. Let's take care of ourselves first, our loved ones, our neighbors, and each other. I know how challenging it is to shelter in place, per the Santa Clara County order, and we are all adjusting to the new environment. You can see here at the city, we're also trying to do the same, and even the setup this evening for our council meeting is different. We will continue to make modifications so that we can ensure transparency and openness under the new guidelines and orders around social distancing and sheltering in place. So thank you all for your cooperation, and so as a result of the new order, you will find that we have also modified our agenda for this evening, and we will be canceling the study session on the preliminary review of fiscal year 2020-21 capital improvement programs. And item 6.1, the rowhouse development at 1555 West Middlefield Road, and item 6.2, the new residential development at 355-365-401 and 415 East Middlefield Road, have been postponed to a later date. So with that, I will, yes, is there, yes, I swear.
Sorry. I just kind of want to echo your thanks to the community, as well as staff, and one of the resources that I think that I've been finding very helpful, and I think that other members of the community could, is the briefing that's now available via the city. You can text 22828 to sign up. It's going to be updated daily, so, and it'll have everything that the city, the county, the state, the federal government's doing, and I think as we're maybe almost getting inundated with various information, it's really nice to have a one-stop resource. So I really wanted to take the time to thank staff for that concerted effort, because I think it's really critical for our community and all our nonprofits to kind of know what we're doing, and I didn't want the time to go by without also talking about availability for school lunch. So I know that Santa Clara County, the Office of Education, and Mountain View Wisman has also been doing school lunch, as well as resources for educational purposes, and I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that those are additional opportunities to make sure that they have the nutrition that they need while we're sheltering in place, though. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, and all of the information is on our website at mountainview.gov, and there is a page, a coronavirus resource page, and that links to the briefing that will be updated daily, so I encourage folks to visit that site for the latest information. So with that, then, if I could move on to item 3, 3.1, the swearing-in of our city manager, Kimbra McCarthy, and yes, again, these are unusual circumstances, and I'm just grateful that our city manager is here, and we welcome you with open arms, and thank you for all that you've been doing already. And with that, we'll do have a swearing-in.
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
That I will bear true faith and allegiance-
To the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
And that I will well and faithfully discharge-
The duties upon which I'm about to enter-
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. I'll just say briefly that this has certainly been a very interesting first two weeks for me, and I feel very lucky and fortunate to be back with the City of Mountain View. I am honored that you chose me to be your city manager, and I feel like we have the best organization with the best employees, and I have really seen that come to light the past two weeks. I think what's happened the past two weeks has really just demonstrated to me just how amazing the community is, and how amazing this organization is, and how deeply staff care, and I'm just so honored to be back. I'm happy to be here with you tonight in my first meeting, and I look forward to many meetings in years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations, and welcome back. All right. We will now move on to item four, the consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? And I just wanted to mention that we are not using the mics today because we're spread out, so if you can just raise your hand, and I'll try to call you in the right order. So any members of the council wishing to pull an item? Is there any member of the public wishing to provide comment on an item? If not, it will entertain a motion.
Mayor, we're just going to check. We have a couple of members of the public, so we'll just confirm. They're watching live, but we'll just make sure that they didn't have any comments. I don't believe that their comments are on the consent calendar.
Okay, great.
Thanks for your patience.
No, thank you. All right, so I will close public comment, and is there a motion to approve?
I'll move the consent calendar, which includes item 4.3, adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute program supplement number F026 to the administering agency's state agreement for federal aid projects, agreement number 04-5124-F15, with the State of California acting by and through its Department of Transportation for West Middlefield Road improvements from Branksworth Avenue to Shoreline Boulevard, Project 19-35, to be read and titled only for the reading weight detachment, one of the council report, and 4.6, adopt a resolution in support of outreach activities to ensure a complete count and participation in the 2020 Decennial Census, to be read and titled only for the reading weight detachment, one of the council report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember McAllister. Are there any other discussions? Is there any other discussion for this? If not, all those in favor, if you can raise aye, and raise your hands. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item six, a public hearing, so these were the items that were, oh, I'm sorry, I have to go back to five. Item five, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic for up to three minutes during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Are there any members of the public? Yes, please, welcome.
I am so sorry that we are living in such really horrible times right now, no doubt about it. I just want to let you know that unfortunately, this situation is not going to be turning around very quickly soon for a long time. Recently, Donald Trump actually admitted that this situation may be going on at least until July or August, and that means we are in for a long haul. And for me, it's been personally ugly because I was being onboarded for a new job in Hawaii when the virus hit, and I've been now cut off of that job. And I've currently applied for unemployment benefits. I am supposed to be getting them, but it looks like the unemployment insurance offices are now not working, and I have not yet received my unemployment insurance transaction card, even though I've already submitted over a month and a half's worth of claims. And so the real issue I'm wanting to address is that, again, even though it was on your website, it's currently not on your agenda, I think at this point in time, it is very important that a emergency moratorium on all evictions be passed by the city council, because there are people like myself, and there are going to be a lot more like me very shortly. The nutrient test indicated that there could be as much as 20% unemployment as a result of this situation. So we've got ourselves a really ugly situation that we have to address, and unfortunately, until the federal government gets in play and starts getting into action, we are going to, of course, ask our local governments to at least provide some kind of assistance. In this case, again, if at all possible, provide a moratorium on evictions for not only for cause, but no cause, because I've just read a report saying that because of it being not included in the San Francisco emergency ordinance, they are actually seeing people being thrown out by people who are claiming that their owners are either moving in or renovating or doing other things to get around the moratorium. Now, if the city does make it so it also covers no fault, I would imagine that, yes, you might wind up with some kind of litigation, but I would say at the same time, it would look pretty foolish under these circumstances for a landlord to try to challenge this situation. This is going to be a very ugly picture. It's not going to end soon. It's probably, the fact is that we are still about a year or so away from even having a vaccine for this virus, and because of that, we are looking at that longer time, and this is going to be a very prolonged issue. We have to really start getting that into our psyche and start dealing with it. That's all I'm asking. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm sort of acting as a guinea pig. I am not contracted to virus. I hope I don't contract the virus, but should I contract the virus, and I go through self-containment for two weeks, and I still am sick, or I've determined that I am sick, where am I going to get care? Where's my bed? Where's my food? I'm sick. Is there communal care for me? No? Yes? Are we eliciting or soliciting doctors to take care of people like me, my exhibit, who can't go out because, who are restricted? We can't go to a food store? We can't get delivery of food? What am I, where am I going? Where's my head? And where are you going to bury me when I'm, after I'm dead? Are you going to cremate me? Are you going to throw me in the Pacific? Is there going to be a funeral? I don't think we're prepared for 2,000 or more people like myself, my exhibit, to actually be sick and to do something. Now, I sent a suggestion, and one of the things I sent in was I thought we would set up temporary facilities in areas that are, who would be available, and I thought, number one, about football fields. Open space, okay? No buildings, restroom facilities sort of nearby, probably electricity and water, et cetera, could be done. Temporary buildings could be made at Quonset Huts, like we did in the military, or possibly greenhouse-type situations, plastic greenhouses, where people could be contained, okay, and get care. I mean, all of these things have to be considered. I mean, all of these things have to be considered because if it's true what the statistics say, there are 2,000 people in this town that are going to be sick without beds. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? If not, I will close public comment. And we will move on to, so six, we do not have any public hearings. Those are the items that were postponed. And we move to seven, new business. And this is the item where we will be discussing our emergency, the state of emergency. And so item 7.1 is a ratification of existence of a local emergency. And we have a staff presentation from our city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item follows the Director of Emergency Services proclamation of a local emergency, which occurred on March 12, 2020. The council must formally ratify the local emergency via resolution, and that is the item before council tonight. The proclamation and subsequent ratification empowers the director to exercise extraordinary police powers as detailed in the staff report. Note, the resolution was revised after it was included in the agenda packet to reference the county's recent shelter-in-place regulations and also describe the impacts of the COVID-19 crisis on staffing levels at the city, which result in the need to suspend various timelines with regard to processing development projects and other matters which involve processing deadlines. Council was provided with a revised version of the resolution, and copies are available for the public as well. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution ratifying the existence of a local emergency, and we're available to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Hicks.
I just thought that maybe the city manager, because it's kind of dry reading and the public that may be viewing either outside or online may not have read it, that maybe the city manager could explain in just a few sentences what this allows the city to do differently and how it addresses, I guess, the previous gentleman's, some of his concerns, not all of them in detail, but, you know, maybe just a brief recap in plain English, not legalese.
Thank you, Councilmember Hicks. So the emergency declaration essentially allows the city to mobilize resources. And that also really makes the ability for us to get mutual aid from other agencies easier. So that's mutual aid for public safety services, our fire and police, from not only our regional partners, but also state and other federal resources. The other thing it does is it allows for us to get rid of regulatory barriers that are in place. So certain processes or procedures that may take a very long time normally can be expedited. And it really just allows us to be a lot more agile and quick with our decision-making in order to respond to the needs of the community. So it allows for us to make decisions that are in the best interest of the health and safety of our community in a very quick manner.
Thank you. Any other questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah, you mentioned police powers. So when I hear that, that sort of perked up a little bit. So, I mean, police powers could, the city manager said, could somebody give us a little more background and details of whether you'd say police powers?
Yes, I can. Police powers is a term of art in municipal law, which, meaning it applies to all actions a city would take to protect the health and safety of its residents. It has, it has the word "police" in it, but it doesn't connotate a police action necessarily. It's any action designed to protect the health and safety of the residents.
Other questions? All right, I will open this up for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item? And I know we're going to check outside as well. It doesn't look like there's anyone, so I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. And there's Councilmember Clark and then Councilmember Mataschek.
Yep, so I, I'm happy to make the motion, but I see there are other folks who want to talk too. I just, in part of, as part of that, I just wanted to make sure that we, I want to first thank the city manager for declaring an emergency is not something we do very lightly. It only occurs when, you know, earthquakes, situations like this, which unfortunately are unprecedented. And to be faced with that in your first few weeks on the job is, I'm sure it was very sobering and not something that we do lightly. And then I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank the mayor for her response during this over the last week or so. This is, you know, many of us at the day as have been mayor, we've been very lucky that we haven't had to face something like this during, we've, there are always challenges, but having to face this, and I think in your prior mayorship, the prior downturn. And so I just, I just, I have tremendous respect for the amount of time and energy that you've put into not only responding to this and helping our community to feel like, you know, we're on top of it and confident in bringing us all together to work as a team, but also the time and energy that you're putting into all the coordination efforts and the city manager and all the city staff as well that's surrounded by this. I, I, I just, I deeply appreciate your leadership during this and everyone else's leadership during this. And I'm very happy that we have such an experienced individual in the mayor's chair this year to guide us through this. So that's all I had to say.
Any other comments or? Okay, did you have a comment, Councilmember?
Well, so I'll move that we, move that we adopt a resolution ratifying the existence of a local emergency to be read and titled only for the reading way detachment one of the council report as incorporating the revisions that the city attorney had previously mentioned.
Great, thank you there. Motion by Councilmember Clark, second by Councilmember Mataschek. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember McAllister.
Yeah, I just, again, we're, a lot of information has to get out there and a lot of clarity needs to be done. So I'm going to ask the question. So in this proclamation, which we have to review in 60 days, I understand, but there is a statewide emergency which waives this provision while the statewide emergency is in effect. Could someone sort of explain the hierarchy of the state having an emergency, the city has an emergency, and how they are interrelated?
The declaration of a local emergency is focused on local needs, and certainly it's informed by state and even federal actions. But really, this is the first immediate local response that the City of Mountain View is taking. So this typically will have detailed parameters about what the local needs are in our community. And certainly, it is informed by state declarations and even federal. But they all work together. I hope that answers your.
Well, I guess if, it says that ours has to be reviewed 60 days. But if by the governor's proclamation that it goes longer, then that saves, that provision is waived?
Yes, and that would extend.
So the governor actually has the final say when the emergency, state emergency would end?
Yes, and we would, we would work in conjunction with that.
So does that mean that ours is automatically tied into theirs? Or do we still have to review it after 60 days?
We would have to look at that depending on what, what happens at that 60-day mark. It could be a matter of re-ratifying the local emergency, but we would look at that. It's an unusual occurrence, but it would either extend automatically or it would be a continuation by the council.
And to the city manager was talking about mutual aid. Could the state request our public safety people to be dispatched in other parts of the state if that's under his, their authority?
Correct. The State Office of Emergency Service can always make a request, but it's the local jurisdiction or agency final say if we can provide that service. We're not obligated. As you know, we have a state fire engine in our city, an OES engine. But even under that contract, we're not obliged. We can actually turn down the request if we have an emergency in town and we can fulfill the request.
Okay, thank you. And my comments is, yeah, this, this city is pretty resolute. And, you know, the people that are up here are very passionate about making sure that people are protected, always providing public safety, public works. That's our essential duties. I think we have some excellent people, as everybody mentioned. It's been my privilege to, over eight years working in it, everybody steps up and they don't ask questions. They say, "How can I help?" And that's always a proud moment. When I go to these national conferences and we start talking about Mountain View, you just, I just beam about how, "We do it, we do it, we do it." These guys are going to say, "Well, we got to try it, we got to try it." And I'm just impressed by how progressive Mountain View is, or just how proactive Mountain View is in handling public safety, all these other issues, and the people of need and so forth. So it's, it is a real privilege to sit up here with my fellow council members and talk about what we're doing is something that's sort of ingrained in our culture. And it just feels natural for us to help and reach out and do the right thing. So thank you for all that everybody's done.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just wanted to also add my thanks. I've been working with our new city manager pretty much through the weekend and every, every hour on the hour, I think, we've been speaking. And I'm just, and grateful to all of you, my colleagues. You know, in times of crisis, this is when we're tested the most. And I'm, I've always been proud of our organization, but never more than this. And I really appreciate everybody pitching in, our leadership with our new city manager, our entire organization. And I think Councilmember McAllister said it correctly, that, you know, it's that how can we help attitude that gets us through these times and makes Mountain View the special place it is. And thank you, Councilmember Clark, for your kind words. Yeah, I do sometimes wonder if it's me or just the timing. But yes, the Great Recession was my first challenge, my first time, and then here we are. But again, I know that with working together as we're doing. And I want to say too that thanks to the relationships that we have with our other partners, some of the information that we've been getting has come to us more quickly. And so we've been able to react more quickly. So I just feel, you know, very proud of our organization and grateful to everyone for all that they're doing. So with that, I will call the questions. So all those in favor of the motion? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And we're gonna, we actually are adding a new, or hoping we can add a new item. We have an item that is in need of immediate action related to item, the ratification of our resolution that we just did. And I would like to ask our city attorney to lead us in this.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This item, which we'll call 7.2, is a late addition to the agenda and is being presented for council consideration under the authority of Section 54954.2, B2 of the Brown Act, as it constitutes a need for immediate action. The Brown Act authorizes discussion on an item not appearing on the posted agenda if immediate action is necessary. Two-thirds or five votes of the council is required to determine that both of the following circumstances exist for this item. First is the need exists to take action immediately. And second, the need for action came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted. I'm now going to turn over things to the city manager, who will describe the essence of the item and present a recommendation for council's consideration.
So as the city council knows, we are in this rapidly evolving crisis that we've been discussing. And the council's received a large amount of correspondence from the public after the agenda for this meeting was posted. And correspondence has continued to come in even up until the start of this meeting from residents who will not be able to pay rent due to the loss of their work income directly resulting from COVID-19 impacts. And like also landlords in our community, especially small landlords, are also impacted by this because of the uncertainty of tenants who potentially might be unable to meet their rent obligations in the near term. So just this afternoon, staff identified below-market rate funds of $500,000 currently available, which could be allocated towards focused rent relief efforts for the near term. And staff is also working with community partners to contribute additional funding to leverage this effort. So as a result of that, in an effort to respond to the urgent needs of the community, it's staff recommendation to approve the following. And the city clerk will bring up the recommendations for the city council to see the detailed recommendations. The first two of which are the Brown Act findings that the city attorney just referenced. And the third and fourth items, which you will shortly see, are actions related to rent relief.
Thank you. So are there any questions from council members? Yes, Councilmember Mataschek.
So we also received a few emails regarding folks who are having difficulty paying their mortgage. So I was wondering if we were factoring that into this recommendation. Is this strictly for rent or would it also be potentially for folks who are struggling to pay their mortgage?
At this point, we thought that it would be for folks who are renting, but that would certainly be a policy decision that the city council could take to direct staff otherwise. So I would look towards council's direction on that piece.
Okay, and I was also wondering if we had also considered businesses who might be struggling to pay their rent as well. But it sounds like what staff's recommendation was strictly for tenants, people who are renting a place to live. So are the, are we going to talk about the other two at a later date? Or can we do that now? Or what was the plan?
If I could add to that, so there are a number of efforts actually being conducted right now and different entities. I did want to call out, as our city manager mentioned, there's a corporation that has, not to be named, that is looking to contribute to this fund. And this is the Short Term Rental Housing Assistance Fund that CSA has, although we're open to other entities that could help us administer the same assistance if possible. But there's also, we've been in contact with the Chamber of Commerce and again, another, a corporation who has expressed interest in trying to come up with some assistance for small businesses. So they're all still in the works. Things are moving very quickly and we're trying to move as quickly as possible, but it's just taking, it takes a few days at least. So I think you'll start hearing things online is my hope. And if, you know, they run into some kind of barriers, then maybe we could revisit those other items. That would be my, my recommendation, but.
Sorry, can I ask for clarification on that? So it sounds like folks are looking at how to help small businesses. Are they also looking at potentially helping folks the mortgage?
That one, no, actually, I haven't heard of anything. And I, so I don't know if we can include that in this, this item this evening, but why don't we?
I think if somebody is not working, they might be struggling to pay their mortgage, just like somebody might be struggling to pay their rent.
Yep. Okay. Councilmember McAllister, and then I had Ramirez, Kame, and Hicks.
So could you, for Councilmember Mataschek's the question. I know since this is a new item, but it says for rent relief. But can it, can we take action tonight for small businesses and mortgage?
Well, the, uh, the facts which precipitated this item were focused mainly on rent relief, but I, I would have to check to see if we received late, uh, high volume of late comments about mortgage relief. Do we have any more information on that? I don't have that.
Well, no, but that's a different question. The question is, can we legally take up rent relief, mortgage relief in businesses?
I think we, the city has received, uh, concerns about all of those items after the agenda was posted. So yes, I think that could be factored into tonight's discussion.
Okay. Well, thank you. And again, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilmember Maticek for bringing up mortgages and small businesses. The other question I have on number four is with community partners. And CSA is one that has an existing program that does short-term bridging, usually one month. I don't know if they do two. Um, and I know things are happening quickly. Has anybody reached out to CSMA, I'm just CSA, to see if they have the capacity to handle something, or would we have to go in-house?
So I can answer that, tee that up. So yes, staff has been talking to CSA all day today. And I would ask our assistant city manager to provide additional information on that piece.
Uh, thank you. And we are also joined by housing staff, Wayne Chen. Um, yes, our, our office and our housing office have been in contact with CSA about their, their sense of the need for, um, expansion of an additional, um, capacity for rental assistance and their interest in participating in that. Um, I don't, I, I don't know if we've had in-depth conversations enough to know exactly how that would be administered and what the capacity is. But I think that we would work with them and any other community partners, um, as would be necessary to make this aid available to the community.
Well, how's that program work now?
Um, right now, my understanding is that CSA is part of a network of rental relief providers and receives funding, not just from the city, but from other sources for those purposes. Um, our funding, um, at least historically through the BMR program, was focused on 80% AMI and hasn't been fully subscribed. Uh, and so what staff really would want to do with CSA is to look at what parameters would meet the existing needs specific to COVID. And that might include looking at income levels that were, um, not as limited as 80% AMI and really looking at what would be the need to, to, um, bridge this gap that people are experiencing in light of the, um, current emergency.
It would, um, we have, say, two weeks before the, you know, end of the month, beginning of the month. Do we have the capacity to get that, uh, knowledge of policies in place and be able to get the funds to CSA so that they could distribute them?
Um, I am not able to say what our exact timing would be, but it would be expedited to the full extent possible, with certainly a very willing, um, folks on city staff and a very willing partner in CSA to make that happen.
Okay. And the $500,000 came from, whose assessment that that would be the dollar amount that would be needed?
Um, we are looking at what might be, um, needed in the way of number of months at an average, um, rent in the city per month and the number of households that that could serve. Um, and I don't know if, if Wayne wants to say more on that, but, you know, the parameters aren't entirely fixed. But that felt like it would be an amount that would allow us to serve potentially between, um, 50 and 100 households, depending on how many months of assistance were provided. We, and we, if I might also, we also have, um, I think, as the city manager, um, mentioned, an intention to reach out to other funding partners. Um, and the mayor mentioned there are others who are interested in this, so that we might be able to have our funds go even further.
And could, if we wanted to, if the council's will was to appropriate more money to expand it for mortgage and small businesses, um, would that be possible tonight?
Um, I, I believe that was the question answered by, by, um, Christian and that it, or the city attorney, and that, you know, you, you can have that as an urgency issue tonight because of the, the need, uh, being both urgent and, um, coming after the agenda packet. But it is the, the council as a whole who can decide whether to, to direct that, those funds, either additional funds. They wouldn't be BMR funds, however, they would have to be general fund or other things.
General funds, that could be taken. I think the city manager wanted to speak, because you could, or did you?
Yes, city manager. Are we, do we have more comments? Should I, why don't we take our assist, other assistant city manager?
I don't want to take any more time, but I especially wanted to just focus on the below-market funds. Um, just the funding needs to change.
Great, thank you. And then I'm going to go back to city manager.
Thank you. I, I think we, we're kind of arriving at the same place. So the $500,000 from BMR would be, it, there are certain restrictions to the below-market rate funding. But if it is council's, uh, desire to look into other funds from the general fund, we can certainly do that if that's the direction from council. I think we do have options and resources where we would be able to craft such a program for, uh, small businesses or those with the mortgage as well. And I think I would ask, um, staff to talk to the BMR funds that might be available to those who have mortgages, who meet those BMR, uh, levels. So I think that could certainly also be an option. So it's really just looking at the threshold of our BF, BMR funds and where the threshold is, and then whether people are renting or whether they own and they're paying a mortgage. It would just be if they're under that threshold. But certainly, we can look at general funds as well.
Uh, Mr. Chen, did you have comments, or?
Good evening, Wayne Chen, Assistant Community Development Director. Just to add some context, the BMR funds, because of the Phase II modifications, um, the fees can be used for up to 120% AMI. And because the program covers rental and ownership, we believe it could cover, um, both groups.
Great, thank you. Um, I have Councilmember Ramirez, and then Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so you've, you've answered, thank you, Councilmember McAllister, because that, that did answer several of my questions. Um, just to clear, so I think item four is intended to address the eligibility concern with the existing program. Only, uh, only certain people would be eligible for the existing program. And the intention is to, to, uh, expand the eligibility criteria. Is that, is that a fair assessment of the fourth recommendation?
So thank you for the question. To clarify, what recommendation four is asking for is for authority, authority for staff to seek a broad, broad variety of working with community partners. So we didn't want to just specify one agency, um, because there may be certain other agencies that we may be able to work with to provide, whether it's rent relief or mortgage relief, should the council choose to give that to a wide variety of people and work with different agencies. So that's really what number four is getting at. Um, so just broad community partners.
Okay. So we're, we're not working within the confines of the existing emergency rental assistance program?
I would ask staff to clarify that.
No, it would be beyond that. We tried to, excuse me, build in flexibility beyond that.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. Um, and then, um, we received some correspondence indicating that the governor's order included a moratorium on foreclosures due to loss of, of income. And I wanted to confirm that that was actually true.
Yes, correct. The governor's order does include, um, the issue of foreclosures due specifically to increased health costs to address COVID-19 or, um, job or wage-related impacts due to COVID-19. And foreclosures are part of that order.
Okay. But, but it did not include, uh, a suspension of evictions for non-payment of rent due to COVID-related income loss.
It also includes that as well.
So it, it, so I, I thought it was an authorization to allow cities to do the, the, uh, rent piece, the suspension of evictions piece, but, but explicitly directed a moratorium on foreclosures.
And I should, uh, clarify, the, the order provides, um, the ability for jurisdictions to, uh, develop, uh, for example, an urgency ordinance to address the issue of, uh, uh, non-payment due to COVID-related, um, items. And then, um, it also includes language regarding foreclosures as part of that protection.
So, but there is currently not a statewide suspension or moratorium on evictions due to non-payment of rent?
Based, based on the governor's statement, the order, it's, it's a provision that would, um, essentially, um, waive the preemption that state, um, provisions would have over local jurisdictions to do such a thing. But it doesn't require cities to do such a thing.
Got it. So we would have to initiate that as a separate action?
That's correct.
Uh, Vice Mayor?
Great, thanks. Um, that, that had been my question. And I think, um, with the fluidity of the situation, um, being able to take into account what's coming from the state, from the county, um, as we're looking at these different types of, um, assistance, uh, type of services for, um, I think are something that I'd like us to be able to, to share with the public. I think because this executive order came out late last night, um, and we won't be meeting until next month, just being, and I don't know if this is something that where the, the, these executive orders and what the city is also doing is, can live on that briefing page. But I think just really having that clarity in terms of, um, kind of what's within the scope of what, um, we can do and what the state's doing, I think would be really helpful, um, and how that's kind of working in tandem. That, that was my question. Um, and I am comfortable within increasing the scope for rental assistance beyond just tenants, but for mortgage and small business. I think that that's going to be a great need. And any type of flexibility, as the city attorney was saying, I think is going to be really critical. Um, for the executive order that came from the governor, that, that's in effect till May 31st. And so I think as we're looking at our di, our different assistance programs, being clear in the timeline with which the relief can, is available is also something I'd like staff to be able to, uh, look into. And maybe being able to stick to the same type of timeframe, um, state, county, whatever makes sense, I think would also be, be helpful. Um, and so, sorry, my questions turned into comments.
Uh, Councilmember Hicks?
I think mine are questions and comments, too. Um, so I, I generally agree with the direction that, that council's moving in. I, I also would like, uh, to cover foreclosures and small businesses. I think it's for the health of the small businesses and also for the health of the city. I think if we start losing small businesses, it's harder to set them up. They are employers. So it's the, the kind of thing where, and, and they are taxpayers. So it's the kind of thing where, um, if we help them a little now, I think down the road, we're all fiscally healthier. Um, so, you know, I think it's kind of a, like sending my kids to college. It should pay off in the end, I hope. Um, so in addition to that, I feel, so, so I will be supporting this staff recommendation, but I also feel like this is, uh, it's, as, uh, Council, or Vice Mayor Kame said, um, this is a fluid situation. So I'm feeling the need for, I don't know how much money we're talking about in terms of need altogether. And I'm feeling the need for some reporting back on, um, you know, on how much additional funding is found and what the requests are for funding. And also reporting back, because I was only able to skim the, um, governor's orders, um, I, I would like reporting back on the additional tools that that gives us as cities and what other cities are doing. Um, if they're doing evictions, moratoriums, or what they're doing in terms of foreclosures in particular. So if we have to look at those in the future, I would also like, I, I'm, uh, fully supportive of the way that we've canceled our, our next, our, our, uh, the meetings, council meetings that we had scheduled and moved them out later. But I would like to be able to call emergency meetings, possibly online ones, to keep in touch with this, this and other situations.
Thank you, Councilmember Maticek.
So, um, a couple more things. Um, I am supportive of the staff recommendation for renters. Um, and in expanding, um, this, so to speak, or adding to this, um, to help other groups of, um, people or businesses, I don't think CSA is in a position to implement that kind of program. So I'm not sure if there's another organization that is. Um, maybe for businesses there is, but I also wonder about folks with mortgages. So I feel like we do need to look at how do we implement, um, the expansion of this. And I also, while I appreciate that we might want to be in the same timeframe as other, uh, like the state or the federal government, I would like to make sure that we leverage the federal, state, and county resources, um, as much as we can. Um, you know, I feel like the county's the one that, uh, did the most recent order. I, I'm hoping they also thought about the impact of it and maybe are putting programs in place to address that. I think we can move more quickly, and I'm very happy to do that. Um, but I want to make sure if the federal, state, or county resources are available, that basically duplicate what we're doing here, that we move to those.
Councilmember Clark, did you? Okay. Um, I'm going to then open it up for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
I've actually confirmed there are no members of the public present. Thank you.
Thank you. I will, I will then close public comment. I'll start with the Councilmember Clark.
So I'll make my comments and then maybe, maybe that also sort of provides a path forward for a motion. But, um, so I, I, I generally agree with, um, a multi-pronged approach. So I think this is the right thing to do immediately. Um, so from a prioritization perspective, um, you know, if you don't pay rent, um, the eviction process can proceed pretty quickly. And we have an existing partner and infrastructure set up to distribute these funds and they're, they're flagged for this. And so I feel comfortable with moving this forward with this amount, part, and giving staff the ability to sort of work through and distribute this as, as, um, uh, as a rental program. I think sort of the second phase of this is looking at, um, things like, um, you know, homeowners, especially those in BMR ownership units, um, who may be struggling to pay mortgages. I think if we look at all mortgages brought, and we're just kind of have a discussion about and researched this, because all mortgages broadly, those payments are probably way higher than rents would be. And so we would exhaust our funds pretty quickly. And those are probably going to be general fund monies. And hopefully we'll be able to get matching funds from other entities. Um, but not to say that we shouldn't do a program like that. I just think it's a separate animal. Um, and I think commercial rents also are probably a totally separate thing, which are probably even more money, um, higher than rents or mortgages. And I'm guessing that there are going to be sort of super funds set up for this at the state, county, federal. And, and I think that we should participate in those things, but I think that we should, um, one, I think there are going to be sort of steps taken to prevent, um, folks from losing their businesses in the near term while we sort all that out. I think probably the same with foreclosures. The foreclosure process is a long process. It's not as quick as in a rental eviction is. And so I think we're going to have time to sort all those things out. And so I guess what I would propose is when we get to a motion would be, um, do this tonight, but also direct staff to sort of pay attention to what things are being set up to protect, you know, homeowners who can't make their mortgage payments and, and how can we participate in those things? And then also the same with our, our small businesses and, and, um, commercial rents. So that, that for me, I think is the, the path forward that I would, um, it's just a two-pronged approach. That's what I would support in the, in the near term. And then we can, the mayor can always call us back, um, before the next regular scheduled meeting if, um, if we need to, you know, take actions prior to that.
I'm going to jump in, um, and thank you for the comments. Thank you to staff for bringing this forward very quickly. So, um, as you, as you heard, the genesis of this was, we're getting a lot of emails about rent challenges. challenges. Actually, I was a board member, CSA board member that we all know very well, reached out to me and reminded me of the short-term rental assistance program CSA has, mentioned that they have an uptick of requests. And as you probably, or most of you know, we do annually fund that program with about $150,000. So I had talked with the executive director as well and asked, well, you know, what kind of, what more could we look at offering in terms of funding? And so this was the number that came about from, from our conversation with CSA. I think there was, there might be some questions about their staffing right now. So that's why the suggestion was to open it to other community partners if they are available, but my conversation, and they all work together, whether it's Destination Home, there's the Housing Industry Foundation, so I think they, and he mentioned that the funds that we offer doesn't cover everybody anyway, so they actually get funds from other places as well. So the immediate request was this amount to be able to address the uptick that they are getting and expect to get. So that was how this came about. I appreciate, I thank you, Councilmember Madashek, for bringing up the mortgage issue. I think that is also something that we should look at, but I do agree that we might have a little bit more time in terms of mortgages, so I would be supportive of looking at that. And then the commercial rents, and this is a hard one, because I've been hearing from restaurants especially saying that, you know, they're closed and this is challenging. And so this is the conversation that we've been having with one of our private partners, and I can't say a lot right now, but I, you know, I can, I can say that there is something happening for small businesses. So we could look at adding to that effort. I think to me, I knew we had housing, affordable housing funds available, and that's why this to me seemed easy to do. I wanted to do what we could do quickly. If we get into commercial rents or small businesses, we get into general fund money, and that's might be a little bit more challenging in light of the fact that our city may be experiencing some downturn as well, and we may be having to relook at our budget. So I'm a little more hesitant in doing that right now. I also have heard, you know, there's small business agency, SBA, they have funds. Some of it is just helping the businesses access those programs. But I do, I have also seen that, I've heard that it's what they need, like in the next week or two. All these other funds might be coming later, so if there's interest in trying to bridge that gap, maybe through a loan program, so that, you know, the funds can be returned to the city once things are better, I would actually prefer to go that route.
I just, I don't think we'll be able to set up something fast enough. Like, we're not set up to lend funds at 0% interest, and it's not that I don't want to contribute to that and figure out, I just think there are going to be other organizations that set that up in a pretty near-term manner that we can work with and maybe contribute to, to some limited extent until we know the full budget picture.
Sure.
I'm just not sure that we're, we should be the ones to, in the next couple of weeks, to just sort of try and set up something from scratch. I just don't think it will work out very well. I think it would be well-intentioned, but I just don't think it would have the impact that we want. And the only other thing I was going to say on the rental front was just, I think staff would do this naturally, but I wouldn't, I think it's fine to flag the 500,000, but until we know the exact need, I would just sort of transfer in increments as, as the need sort of develops, as opposed to just sending half a million dollars over to CSA tomorrow. I would just sort of monitor the needs and the situation and say, you can go up to this amount if, as need arises, not just to CSA, but to the other organizations, too.
Okay, great. And other comments? Yes, Councilmember Ramirez?
Thank you, Mayor. And echoing the comments of others, thank you for all of the conversations you've been having to explore other ways of providing financial relief for the folks who are economically impacted by the pandemic. I've been, I think all of us have been a little stressed ahead about how to respond appropriately, and I'm going to support the recommendation. I would support Councilmember Madashek's recommendation to explore ways of providing financial relief for, for other impacted parties, you know, people who are paying mortgages or small businesses. I think, you know, what, what our primary obligation is that the time-critical element to all of what we're doing is to slow the spread of the virus, right? Because as long as it is spreading, we could only see, I think, the economic impacts persist and get worse, because they will compound against each other. And I, what I'm concerned about, and I think Councilmember McAllister had referenced this, is it would be, it's great to make available the funding, but I just, I don't know what our ability to disperse, to make sure folks are aware of the program and to disperse the funding quickly enough to avoid things like eviction for non-payment of rent due to the economic impact of the virus. And, you know, while we explore partnerships that could help us provide financial relief, whether it's Silicon Valley Community Foundation or others, I think it's also appropriate to look at, you know, temporary emergency measures like a suspension on evictions for non-payment for 30 days and no more. That I think will buy us the time to make this program well-known to folks and to make sure that we have the staffing capability to disperse the funds. Because any, any eviction that would occur, you know, the financial impacts to people could exacerbate the crisis. You know, my understanding is the homeless population is identified as one of the most vulnerable, and they're in a position to spread the virus, so we don't want to, you know, exacerbate that problem. And it may very well be that we can do this quickly, but this is one of those things where I think, I think the risk averse approach would be, you know, I'll support this recommendation, and maybe we could do a separate vote for this, but, but an urgency ordinance temporarily suspending evictions for non-payment, I think, could go a long way in, in providing the financial security that folks need while we ramp up these kinds of programs. So that's the only other thing I would want to consider, and I guess do this first, and then we can explore that.
Councilmember McAllister?
Yeah. Are we done with questions? Are we going to comments?
This is comments, yes.
Okay. I personally would like, you know, to do all projects, because we don't know, you know, 500,000 to Councilmember Clark's, you know, we don't know how long this is going to last. This could be one, two, three, or four months, and if they keep checking in with us, then we're going to do it. I'd rather give our staff and whoever the community partners are the ability to, hey, we have to, they know what they have and, I mean, clients that they got to deal with, and if it goes out two or three or four months, they know what's going to be needed. So I'd rather be on the generous side, or conservative, as you might think, and give people, the community members enough money so that they can take care of whatever they need to be without coming back to us. And then we'll have a much better sense of, okay, they didn't use it, it comes back. But I want to be able to ensure that, you know, again, on a conservative, I'd like to see, you know, maybe three months' rent. I don't know, Wayne, if he has an idea where the 500,000 came to, is, well, is it one month, two months? I'm just going to say, hey, it could be three, three months or four months, and that way, then we can do it. And so I want to do that. And in the response to, I recommend this, but I also like, I would like to work on Councilmember Madashek's, I'm so used to saying Mayor Madashek, former Mayor Madashek, that we need to get the process going, that if we are going to do the funds for these other mortgages or business evictions, and I think the governor put a temper on that, but we need to get the process going, because it could be a long period of time. And if we just say, well, let's kick it down the road and come back to us, I think we need to be proactive in getting these things started. If we meet back in, if we meet in our next scheduled meeting of April the 14th, you know, that's quite a bit of time that's going on, and people are going to be seeing, and you know, it could be exponentially going higher. And so I'd rather be proactive so that when people need us, we're there. I don't want to see us do like the federal government, and our elected president was, yeah, it's not, you know, it's, we're just going to kick it down, it's not as bad, it's not as bad, it's not as bad, and then all of a sudden it gets hit. So I'd like us to be not in that and show an example of leadership and get ahead of these things, and so when people need our help, we can react and take care of it.
Councilmember Hicks?
I agree with the previous two speakers, and I would like, I would like to go with the staff recommendation and then have authorized staff to explore the, the other two things that we talked about, the, for mortgage payments and small business, and come back to us with a report on how that could be set up and what, you know, what other entities, you know, county, state, federal are doing, and how we can hook into those so that we can move on that as quickly as possible. And I also am interested in an eviction, a short-term eviction moratorium, because I would hate, again, I think it's a, we're in a public health emergency, and I think that I would hate to see people evicted and then we have to do cleanup. I think a short-term moratorium is a much, is a much cleaner solution. And in short-term, everybody, almost everybody is taking some kind of hit. You know, there are all sorts of businesses that aren't, aren't open at all, so I think like a one- or two-month moratorium is kind of like closing your business for a month. So I would support what Councilmember Ramirez brought up as well.
I'm going to ask the city attorney, actually, if you could comment on the moratorium issue.
Sure. This item before you right now is really focused on, on this financial aid for rent relief. It doesn't encompass a discussion of a bring-back of a, of a moratorium for, on evictions. However, and the reason, there are, there are different things happening here. This is a identifiable need that there is funding available for, and it's, we've discussed that it's, can be administered. The, a moratorium ordinance is much more detailed and involves a lot more work in making sure the, the terms work with the city's existing regulations. However, later tonight in item eight, if councilmembers are interested in bringing up the topic of a short-term eviction ordinance, and a majority of council were to support that concept, we could, we could be directed to bring that back, bring that back to council.
Great, thank you. Did I see Vice Mayor? Did I see your hand? No? Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember Madashek?
So, I'm not quite sure exactly how to do this, so I'll give it my best try. So I'll, I move that we find that an immediate need exists, or that a need exists to take action immediately on the following, to take the following actions, and that the need for those actions came to our attention, earned the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted, and that those actions are that we appropriate $500,000 from below-market-rate funds for rent relief aid, that we authorize staff to work with community partners to develop and administer rent relief aid to the broadest spectrum of tenants possible. And, and a fifth item that we direct staff to work with, to sort of research options that we may have to, to extend benefits such as these to, to, to those in ownership units who might be struggling to make mortgage payments, especially, especially those in, you know, BMR ownership units, but, but not limited to that. And that we also, that staff would also look into ways that we can tap into other things, either sources of funding or other programs that might be developed at various levels of government and in various agencies, so that at, when the time is right, at the soonst possible time, that we can also look at contributing to programs that would allow small businesses to tap into the funds that they need to, to remain afloat.
Is there a second for that motion?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item?
So I just have one thing. I just wanted to make it clear that I was not suggesting that we slow down the contribution to CSA for the immediate rent relief, because I do recognize some of the others' situations people find themselves in might take longer to come to fruition, so to speak, than this. But I'm under the impression, and maybe those of you who have spoken with CSA, I think they have the capacity to help people, right? They just need funding. Okay.
All right, any other discussion? Yes?
The only thing I just want to highlight again is just making sure that this information is out there. After council action tonight, you know, we did receive many, many emails on this topic, and just making sure that folks are aware once, you know, things are, things go forward, and having that information, I think, will be really important since we're moving to just essential services, so.
Any other comments? So, yeah, I just wanted to mention that this was really an attempt to try to respond as quickly as we could, and because we have a program that's already set up, I think it is a matter of getting the word out. But for those who have written in and others who are having challenges meeting their rent, this seems, it seemed to me to be the quickest way to respond to that without having to bring, have staff do more research and bring things back. And, you know, certainly if there's interest in doing that, we can discuss that, I guess, in item eight. But my, my, my interest was to do this, and I also just felt that this was a more equitable way to approach the issue. And so for that reason, I definitely support this. Thank you again to staff for working so quickly to make this happen. And with that, I'll call the questions. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to item eight, council staff committee reports. Are there any councilmembers wishing to, yes, Councilmember McAllister?
I had the high honor of representing the city of Mountain View at the National League of Conference City Summit, no, City Conference in Washington, DC. I also had the privilege, along with Councilmember Clark, going to the US Army and having a good chat with Shenandoah and Orion's Park and how they are amazed that it has taken six years to go nowhere, and so that was quite interesting. Because I was mayor when we first sat down and talked to them, and that was in 2015, so that was, they were impressed with ours. And I also had the opportunity to talk with the Department of Transportation. I had a very good meeting. In fact, I passed on some information to our Public Works Director about funding, that they have a mechanism, instead of having us to go out for a bond, they fund projects for 80%, and it's a much easier way to do it. So I also took some classes in asking the right questions, and so it was, I think, we did a great, great honor, and it was great. And I went to a transportation committee meeting, and we talked about the things that are important about getting money and all the things that the federal's doing and working for it. So it was a very well-meeting that I enjoyed it, and I wish more of you could have attended.
I can see that class really helped. Councilmember Madashek?
So I also attended the National League of Cities Conference, and I took classes, attended sessions. I didn't do as much networking as I have in previous years, because we were all kind of trying to stay away from each other in some ways, but it was still a very valuable conference. I also attended the Airport Land Use Commission meeting. I've sort of forgotten the date of this, at this point, of when that was. But that commission has got a lot of projects coming forward because of the proposed expansion of the San Jose Airport, as well as changes that the city of San Jose wants to make to land use to increase intensity in a couple of key areas. And that comes to the Airport Land Use Commission for an evaluation of whether or not those proposed changes are consistent with the plans that we have for. proposed changes are consistent with the plans that we have for, with the regulations around the airports, I should say. And then I also attended the Airplane Noise Roundtable Meeting. It's the Santa Clara, Santa Cruz Roundtable. And we established a couple of committees, one, a technical working group that's going to look at procedures, and then also a legislative committee, and I'm the chair of the legislative committee. Because I firmly believe that the solution to airplane noise is going to be legislation, because it's very difficult for the FAA to make other changes. So I thought, okay, then let's just see what we could do there when it comes to a, from a legislative perspective. And that's it.
Thank you, councilmember Clark.
Yes, councilmember McAllister, also noted I was in Washington, D.C., had, fortunately, it wasn't as timely now that we know, what we know. I fear that the Community Economic Development Group will change significantly from where it was a week or so ago, in terms of lobbying for all of the disaster relief and all of the economic development aid that will probably be wrapped up in some of these mega, mega measures. So I wish we'd known this when we had met. But we'll figure that out one way or another. And then we did, I think, have a good meeting with the Army at the Pentagon. They did provide some good information at the time on sort of where they thought the administration was headed on things, but I also fear that some of that is now up in the air, as much else is. So anyway, I wish I had more to report there, but I just wish we'd had that meeting a week from, you know, a month from now as opposed to last week, so anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Hicks.
Vice Mayor, did you go as well? Did you want to, okay. Okay. Well, as I mentioned earlier, I, I'm the liaison de avenidas tonight, which provides senior services in the area, and I went to their first meeting, and it was not surprisingly all about their response to COVID-19, and teaching people how to use Zoom. So one of the big takeaways was that they would like to provide more meal delivery, and maybe do it in a way that supports small businesses. And I know that some other countries that have had, that are unfortunately ahead of us in terms of the, the virus, have developed more sanitary and no-touch meal deliveries, like drop-off meal delivery with kind of a systematic approach, so that you feel safe getting that delivery. So that was one of the topics that we discussed but didn't fully flesh out, and it sounds like, from what the mayor said earlier, that she's been having, oh, I also reached out to the Chamber of Commerce. The other takeaway was to reach out to the chamber about that, and they're very open to talking about that and developing some methodology as well. And it sounds like the mayor has been talking to people as well. So I would like to, you know, I, I would like to work together with all the partners who would like to develop something like that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you. So last week before the shelter-in-place, the Santa Clara County held a media-only press conference related to the census. We are two weeks away from Census Day, April 1st, and I know at least two of us on the day have already filled out their census questionnaire. So, oh, three, oh, yay, so many. So I just-
Being from home helps with that.
And so as we are all sheltering in place, and working from home, or unable to be out and about, we have the five minutes that it takes to fill out the questionnaire. It's really simple. You can do it on the phone, you can do it online, or you can fill it in. You know, I think now more than ever, facing this pandemic, it, it calls to, to mind how important funding is for our municipalities, for our agencies, and the census is how, how we get all that money. And we are able to provide these essential services that we so desperately need. So just want to make sure that happens. Severe undercount is predicted in our state, with the thought that we would lose at least one congressional seat. And with this pandemic, my fear is that we will lose even more, and that it's going to be not good. So call on everybody to, to fill it out, and if you have any questions, we have all the information on our, on our website as well.
Thank you. I wanted to report out that I attended the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Meeting, gosh, was it last month, last week? And two points, SVCE is expanding the REACH Code Program to provide additional support to member agencies and the greater development community as they implement new codes. Support will consist of increased technical support for city staff, architects, developers, and affordable housing providers in their transition to all-electric buildings. And the second item, SVCE signed a 15-year contract with Coso Geothermal Power Holdings, LLC, to provide a total of over 4.3 million megawatt-hours of clean power throughout the course of 15 years. This will supply approximately 7% of SVCE's clean renewable power needs. This Coso geothermal project allows SVCE to deliver clean electricity to your community, to our community, on a 24/7 basis, increasing the availability of clean energy throughout all hours of the day. And I also noticed that with everyone working from home, I think our carbon emissions will be lowered during this time. So any other, oh, I do, yes, city attorney, you had a report?
I do, actually, tonight. This closed-session report links back to the February 25th meeting, and at that meeting in closed session, the city council voted unanimously for the city attorney to reject two claims. The first is Mario Melendez, claim number 20-3, and the second is Ching Shae, that's claim 20-4, and those claims have both been rejected by our office.
Thank you. Yes, councilmember Ramirez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to see, engage the council's interest in directing staff to return, ideally before the end of the month, with, with the urgency ordinance, providing protections against evictions for non-payment of rent. And I found, I found a letter from CSA that was sent, I think, earlier today, in which they, they do request the council to explore this. CSA would find it particularly helpful in this time of crisis if council could explore moratoriums on evictions and rent increases and increased funding for rental assistance. So they do make the ask, I think, as part of a, part of a broader attempt to convey that they're anticipating a dramatic increase in, in requests for assistance. And maybe, I, I think part of the, the concern would be, even though it's not a dispensation from the obligation to pay rent, it's, it could result in some non-payment of rent. And I think it would be important to couple with, couple this with the confirmation that the governor's order did in fact include a moratorium on foreclosures to help protect folks who might be financially impacted, if the council does decide to proceed with this, because they may, it may result in a, in a loss of, of rental income. But I think, you know, first and foremost, it's, it's just to provide us some time to make sure that the, the program that we've just authorized is, is established and folks have a chance to, to become aware of it, so that way we, they can start paying rent, even with, with the assistance that we're providing. So that my, my, my request would just be to see if, if there's interest in the council in pursuing this.
Is there a show of hands? One, two, three.
I have a number of questions that, about agendizing it. So one of those is, so I read the executive order last night, was somewhat confused by it. So my, my understanding is that the governor himself does not have the authority to, in a statewide manner, sort of impose a moratorium on evictions, like, like the action he was able to take on foreclosures. And basically, what the order was doing was removing any sort of state preemption around municipalities being able to impose a moratorium on evictions if they wanted to. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the legislature is out for a month or so, so it's unlikely, I think, that the state would take, in order to do the moratorium evictions, I think the state legislature would have to act. Is that right? The governor can't act alone on that.
Yes, actually, the, the order really placed it on cities. If they were interested in, if cities are interested in a moratorium or suspension on evictions, it would be that the cities are allowed to do that, and the order suspended the concept of preemption in other state law that would, would otherwise prohibit that. So it's essentially allowing the cities, but the, the state is not imposing any of their own restrictions on that.
And then we, and then I think the two other questions I have, we, we, I guess we don't have to get into this now, but I, I think one of the things that, if we were to agendize this, that we would look into would be the, the interplay between us and the RHC, and whether, you know, if we were to say it's, it's for not, you know, for non-payment of rent, as long as you can prove that, you know, you're economically damaged by this, I assume that paperwork would be reviewed by some entity, and that would probably be the RHC, unless we took it and put it on our housing staff to review all of that. There has to be an apparatus to review all that, I assume.
Yeah, those are just a few of the careful considerations that, that we'd have to evaluate in how to administer such an ordinance, and also how to enforce it. So quite a few, that's certainly one of them. It would be allocation of which staff, and also what that review process would be, and if there would be a, how, how disputes could get resolved, whether that's mediation. So all this needs to be thought through. It, it would be a fairly significant administrative component.
At the lowest level, though, if, if it were, I forget about the RHC for a second, if a city like San Jose were to do this, and, but the city didn't want to adjudicate these things, I guess it would just be an unlawful detainer that they would bring, and they'd settle it. Or, or does there have to be, in San Jose's case, is it settled, it was like the city review all that and make a decision?
You know, I'm not, it's a pretty fast-moving area. I, I'm not that familiar with the workings of the San Jose, but also there has to be a consideration of, for example, what happens after the 120 days.
Right.
Then do the, so all of it has to be thought through, so.
And then I, and then my last question is, or it's more of a, what impacts my thinking on whether or not we agendize this, is an urgency ordinance like that would require five votes?
That's correct.
So just for my colleagues, from a staff workload potential, or I think, even though four of us can agendize something, I think it would be good to only do it if we have five votes to agendize it, because I, I don't want to be in a position where four of us vote to agendize it with, with, where we, there's just no clear path forward. So I actually support agendizing it, but I also, in my thinking, is sort of what is, what are other folks thinking about whether or not to agendize it? And I don't want to go down the path of doing all of this work if, if we're not going to have, if we're unlikely to have the votes to, to pass an urgency ordinance.
So I, I wanted to speak too. My thought was, number one, time, and I think the governor's order is only until May 31st. Time, resources, how does this interplay with the CSFRA? You know, all the emails we're getting are, have been, well, San Jose passed this ordinance, so can you also do that? San Jose's rent control is, I believe, an ordinance of the city council. It's not a charter amendment like ours. So that was my question, is what can we really do and not do? And should this be the RHC declaring the moratorium, not us? So my thought was, before we jump into this and agendizes this and, you know, schedule an emergency meeting, perhaps we can ask staff to do a memo as to what we really can and cannot do, and then based on that, and what the RHC can do, because it does seem like it's, it's their authority, not ours. We can't do an ordinance on rent control, right? So anything on rents, my understanding was the RHC's bailiwick. So that was my thought, was we just get a memo about what we really can and cannot do before we delve into this and have staff, put a lot of staff time into it. So I'll, I'll go with councilmember Madacek, and then councilmember Hicks.
Yeah, I just want to note that I don't necessarily assume that everyone who might be facing this situation is in a unit that's covered by rent control. So I'm not sure the RHC would have authority to do something for non-controlled units. So I think it's a little bit more complicated than just can the RHC do this. But I, I'm actually hoping that what we did tonight, earlier tonight, it, it's so much faster, and I feel like it's simpler, and I'm hoping it solves the problem. So I'm not necessarily up for allocating staff resources to look at something that's going to take a while to do, when we've just done something that I think will help a lot of people very quickly, so we don't have to do an ordinance.
Councilmember Hicks.
So actually, I like the idea of a memo. I feel like I need a little information gathering. I mean, I appreciate the, the difficulties that everybody's pointing out at the same time, and, well, I only, I only skim the, the governor's, the executive order and don't fully understand it. I also have heard that other cities are doing this, but I don't understand how it would apply to our situation. And because things are moving so fast, and because I think this is really one of the most important things we can do. If it were something smaller, I, I wouldn't want staff to spend time doing the information gathering. But if, if we really have to, I would like all our ducks to be lined up, and that we could come back and, and grapple with this quickly and make a decision. So I support the mayor's suggestion of doing a memo, so we can gather a little bit of information and be prepared.
All right, councilmember McAllister, councilmember Clark, and Vice Mayor.
You know, I think the actions that we took today, the $500,000 is, would solve, I think solves a potential problem, because what a moratorium might do is it, it helps one, but it hinders another. And by us having the money available, the person gets to keep their house, and those people that have to pay mortgages, the small mom and pops that have a fourplex, that they have their mortgages to pay, I think everybody's whole, and so I think it's a much fairer approach to councilmember Hicks' concern. I don't think many cities are opening, you know, they might pass an ordinance, but I don't think they're putting in $500,000 plus our $150,000, and working with an agency to pay rent for the short term, or whatever it takes. So I think we're very unique and very proactive in trying to prevent people leaving their houses and maintaining their space. So I think we, we should work with what we have, because it, it works, it's fair, and it's, and it's immediate. It's something that we do right now.
I think it's all, councilmember Clark.
I was just going to say, if we do move forward with the memo piece, since we have outside counsel that is very, very familiar with our setup, the more that we can lean on them to draft a memo and save the city attorney's office time right now, I think I would be perfectly fine with that. I don't think it has to be something that we, I don't expect it to all be done in-house and be done perfectly, since we've utilized them before.
Vice Mayor.
I was going to look to councilmember Ramirez to see if he might augment his motion to the suggestion the mayor, the mayor made. I think that, that you bring up a good point, as does councilmember Clark. And I think part of it is wanting to explore all the different options to help folks, and while I think what we did tonight will be a big step in that, you know, one of the things I firmly believe is, you know, doing as much as possible to keep people housed, right? Because once they're, they're homeless, that's a really difficult thing, and so that's why the, the EAN, Emergency Assistance Network, exists within the county, and we participate it, participate in it through the Short-Term Rental Assistance Program. So I was going to look to you to see, well, he had, he had put it forward as an item eight, that was my understanding.
It was this straw vote.
Straw, yeah. I just wanted to give him the opportunity.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. So I'm, I'm comfortable with a memo that would sort of explore our legal authority to pursue this. And I would also request that it include an analysis of, well, I guess a candid conversation with whatever partners we're working with to distribute the funds, whether they have the capacity to meet the demand and get the word out. Because I think that's, that's really, if, if they can, if, if we're- Because I think that's, that's really, if, if they can, if, if we're very successful in making sure folks are aware of the program and if there is, if there isn't a, a problem in dispersing the funds, then, then this solves the problem. But if there is an indication that we do need to buy ourselves a little bit of time, then my request would be if we have the legal authority to do this, um, and our partners in distributing the funding feel that this is, this is important for us to do, that we do agendize, um, a, a meeting to, to talk about, um, that we direct staff to, to do, to do the exploration and then agendize a, a discussion about whether to adopt such an urgency ordinance.
So, um, I wanted to add, as I've been listening to all of you, I think, um, there was a good point that was brought up by Councilmember Vermaticek. Um, I was thinking of RHC and rent-controlled units, but you're absolutely right. We have so many different kinds of units and, you know, that becomes the question, what about, um, people renting rooms and houses? Uh, I mean, what are, what are we talking about? And so again, I, that's why I, we, we had the item earlier and I agree with Councilmember McAllister. My thought was that's the quickest way, the simplest and clean way to do something quick now. And, um, I, I guess I'm, I'm just starting to think that even exploring this is just going to open, unravel and open up a lot of more what-ifs. And I just don't know if we have the time in light of the fact that this moratorium order is only for the next two months. And so I would actually be more open to seeing if we, you know, are able to administer the funds that we just approved with, through our partners. And, you know, if they end up, um, depleting the funds because demand is so high, I would entertain revisiting, adding more to that fund. So that, and I really want to be mindful, like, you know, I've been working with our staff and I just know how much work is, um, the piles are really high and I just don't want us to add more if we maybe, you know, don't, if, if it's something that only lasts for a month or two, um, that we can address in a different way more quickly. So I'm actually thinking that, um, we just move forward with the fund and look at potentially adding, augmenting that down the road if we need to. Actually, so, um, did you, if you wanted to make a straw vote, we can take that.
And that, this would be for the, the memorandum, um, analyzing our legal, legal authority to provide these protections and then, I guess, a conversation with the potential partners and whether they have the ability to distribute the funding quickly based on the numbers that we're going to see over the next week.
Well, they have already said that they can, that this was a request they made based on what they need. Um, so, you know, I'm going to trust them. Uh, we don't know, obviously, we don't know what the uptick will be, but, um, yeah, I, that this is, that money was based on a conversation we had.
Did you have?
I, I just had a question. I mean, I think that one of the, the immediate funding is, is the most pressing need so that people can make rent. I think one of the things, um, that appeals to me about what Councilmember Ramirez is talking about is just people are facing such uncertainty day-to-day, um, between the different, um, kind of recommendations for their, their safety, um, and their health. And so I think that, that, uh, the sheltering in place and the uncertainty and just the high percentage of folks who live paycheck to paycheck is just leading people to a lot of stress. And so, um, I, I think that's where my intent is in, in, in the exploration. If there's other things that we can do that are not as staff-heavy, um, and, and time-consuming and that could meet that immediate need to make people feel reassured, like, that they'll be able to, to afford to be able to stay where they're, they are, you know, I'm inter, I'm interested in that. I, I just, um, you know, the governor putting that out there, I think, um, made people feel like there was an additional hope in, in, uh, out there, um, more than just rental assistance. Um, so they had kind of that certainty that they wouldn't be facing eviction. And I think that's where, um, I, I don't know what, what other kind of things we can do other than, than what Councilmember Ramirez brought up. And so, you know, I don't know if it can be, once we, um, distribute the funds to CSA, if we can get some sort of like report back and hear back in terms of like, do they need more funding? Is there more that the city can do? And then we can call an emergency meeting at a later time if we need to move down that path of looking at an, an emergency eviction ordinance. I mean, I, I'm just trying to respond to that ever-changing needs, um, so.
Uh, Councilmember Hicks and then Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, I want to support what the Vice Mayor just said and I, I feel like we're, we're very much operating in a bubble right now and that, that the discussion we're having might feel very different if members of the public were in the audience. But I know that the, the emails I've gotten have been, I've gotten a tremendous number of emails on, uh, on the, uh, on having some sort of eviction moratorium. And I, I just feel, I guess I feel what, uh, what the Vice Mayor said, giving people, um, some backup assurance that, that we're looking, that we have a backup plan. And although, although the governor's emergency was short-term, we never know, um, whether that's going to be extended. We don't know how this is going to play out. And the president just made an announcement that, that it, it may be until June or July. Um, so, so I would like to have a Plan B and I would like to have some, something that's a little reassuring. And I, I thought that the, the memo that you raised was kind of a good, um, you know, less work and so a good backup plan.
Councilmember Clark.
So I, I agree. And in light of just now thinking about what, um, Wayne had said earlier about the number of families that will probably be served by the 500,000, I think we will, there will probably be way more than that number of families ultimately who need, um, access to that and we'll have to figure out the funding for that. But I think Councilmember Ramirez will, will support the memo if, if the general direction is to engage outside counsel as much as possible to draft the memo. Because I, I think we just need to conserve staff resources right now as much as possible, so.
Yes, Councilmember McAllister.
Question for staff. So a moratorium, the maximum the city council can do is 45 days?
No, that's a good question. There's, there's two types of, of moratorium ordinances. The one you're referring to is more for land use matters, such as we did for the cannabis regulation. This one would be for the, the term that, that the city council determines.
Oh, so it's open-ended?
It's a kind of a general emergency, not a, not in the land use context.
Okay, so once we put it in place, then it could stay in place for?
Yes, as long as the emergency, uh, persists.
Okay, then I have a question for Councilmember Ramirez. We just did a deal, so, uh, we authorized $500,000 and it sounds like there's a support to continue to fund that. If we have a moratorium, how is that going to help the person that actually owns the property if they are deprived of their funds? By doing what we're doing now, we, everybody is taking care of the, the moratorium is sort of, you know, not a high priority because everybody's getting their funding, the people are in place, they know that they'll get it, they know that the city is backing them. So what is the advantage of a moratorium that is fair for both sides?
Well, I'll answer in two ways. The first is my understanding is that the property owners are protected from foreclosure because there is now a moratorium statewide on foreclosure of properties based on loss of income. So at least they're protected from that particular concern.
But do they still have to pay it back, though? They're not forgiven of the money. Are they given, they don't have to pay that money?
They do, they pay.
They still have to pay them back mortgage, so you're delaying a payment. So they're not evicted, but you're delaying a payment for them. So, okay, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that point.
So it's, it's, there's, uh, multiple things we're addressing, right? So, um, the, the immediate concern is my property will be foreclosed because I'm not receiving income is, is addressed at least temporarily. And I think that's why I'm, I'm very supportive of, of this fund because that could also provide some, I, my, my guess is most people will, will want to pay their rent. Um, and it's more about buying us the time to make sure that we have the, the infrastructure in place to make sure that folks are aware of the program and can access the funding. Um, and people will have to work through a caseworker. It's not, we're, we're not giving people checks, right? There's going to have to be some kind of analysis of household income and eligibility. Um, I don't think we actually give, my understanding is we don't give the households the check, the check is given to the landlord. So there's, there, there are some steps that have to be taken. Um, and, you know, some people who are working with caseworkers, people who are working with CSA may find that CSA staff become ill, you know, and, and their capacity is deprived. So it's more about can we buy ourselves 30 days to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to make sure that this program is successful? I think it'll be successful for the subsequent month, but I, I don't have the, the assurance that, that it will be successful immediately. And folks are looking at having to contend with this in, in just a couple of weeks.
The program for, if I, and Wayne, you could help me, but I think the program's been going on for about three years. So they already have the infrastructure, they already have how to do it. So it has been successful. So I'm just curious, what you think would make it not successful? And Wayne, do you have the answer, how long have they been doing this particular?
Last year.
Yeah, I just want clarity.
I don't have the exact number of years, but it's definitely been a few years that the city has provided funding. Um, and, uh, based on today's, uh, staff's conversation with CSA, um, it does appear that they have already received a, a fairly sizable, um, number of new inquiries, just kind of based on their, on their load. So I believe currently they're serving 20 households, they've received an inquiry, uh, inquiries, seven new inquiries. So they're, they're, they're looking at that and they, they are seeing a bit of an increase already this week.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, it is, it's a working program, so maybe, you know, we should get some feedback on how it's monitored and, but it is successful and it does work.
That's why all I'm seeking is, is the, the memorandum. Because I, I think we will, we really won't know what the demand will be until we hit the peak of the impact of the epidemic. And, you know, what worst-case scenario, we have a scenario like Italy where there are tens and tens of thousands of cases and people are deeply impacted. And I hope it doesn't come to that. But in the event it does, we can't guarantee that CSA staff will be present to help administer the program or whichever partners we're working with. That's why it's more about buying ourselves the time to, to get the program up and running so it can be successful in the medium to long term. I'm not seeking a moratorium indefinitely, you know, or even two months, just one. But it would be contingent on the analysis of the memorandum justifying a suspension on evictions.
So I have a question for you, Councilmember Ramirez, since you work for the City of San Jose that did this type of ordinance. Do they, do you, does the city have, um, like a short-term rental assistance program like we do?
I, I don't work on housing policy. I should know this, but I don't know offhand.
Okay. Um, and then do you know, um, oh, Count, Mr. Chen, do you know what San Jose has? And the other question was, um, and I think this is what Councilmember McAllister was going, going to is, yes, we could have, help the tenants, but there may be some property owners who cannot afford to forgive rent for a month. And so does San Jose have a fund or something to help the property owners? Because that's.
This issue did come up. Um, there were a number of property owners who expressed concerns about this kind of program. Um, and included in the greater package, I guess, of financial assistance is an intention to help provide funding for impacted small mom and pops as well. So small businesses is fairly broadly defined, I think. And, um, their, their meeting today was supposed to flesh that out. I, um, you know, I, I haven't been able to get an update on what the council ended up authorizing today, um, but, uh, that, that certainly did come up and there's an intention to, to address that concern as well.
Mr. Chen, did you have some information for us?
I don't have the specific programmatic details there, uh, but if staff were directed to provide a memorandum, we've already begun to create a matrix of the other cities and we could fold that into the, um, the analysis.
Okay, great. Okay, um, so any other comments? If not, I'm going to take a straw motion on Councilmember Ramirez's request to have a memo. Um, and would that include, uh, Councilmember Clark's suggestion that it come from outside counsel? Um, I would actually also add, um, the update on how our fund is, um, doing in terms of administration, um, as well as the matrix of what other cities are doing.
And I, I just wanted to get, uh, clarity on the mechanics of sharing that memo with council. If that's the desire to have a off-agenda memo that you can all digest and then, um, I'm, I'm thinking ahead to how that, that does get agendized eventually, if that's a direction from, uh, direction from the mayor or, or it's just brought back in a special meeting for discussion, uh, among the whole council. I just want to be mindful of how we're, how we're proceeding with the memo.
Is it possible to, um, ask, after the memo is provided, to ask councilmembers for interest in agendizing the item at a special meeting?
Yes, I mean, well, that's, that's a little tricky because that's a collective, uh, concurrent, you know, we'll, we'll figure out the best mechanism. I don't want to take up time.
There might be a way, I know the mayor can call a meeting, but I think there's a way for four councilmembers to also call a meeting and I have to go back and read the charter, but maybe that's a better idea.
Let me, I will look into that, those details about how to bring that back most officially with, you know, the awareness that time is of the essence. So I'll, I'll figure that out.
Great, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Hicks.
I was just going to make one last pitch. I, I think one of the reasons I feel a need for a backup plan is that I'm in frequent communication with in-laws, actually, they're my sister's in-laws in Italy. And I know they're, in, in Italy, a lot of people are thinking about things that they wish they'd done in the past. And to me, a memo is, you know, it's, it's something that is not, I mean, it's easier for me to say, but it's not that difficult to do and I would like to have, I would hate that we look back at this moment later and say, we wish you'd done it. It seems like, at this point, to me, the least we can do.
All right, um, with that, all those in favor of the memo, raise your hands. So that's unanimous. All right. Any other items from councilmembers or staff? If, yes, Councilmember McAllister.
I would like to invite everybody to share a welcoming ice cream cake to honor our city manager tonight. And it's her favorite ice, some, second favorite ice cream, it's Oreo Cookie and Cream, so it's available, uh, in the committee room and then you're all invited to recognize our new manager, city manager and welcome her with all the sweets we can give her.
Thank you, Councilmember McAllister. Um, is there a closed session report?
Well, I think we ended up jumping ahead earlier tonight.
Oh, that was your close.
So I did that. I, I didn't know, um, Councilmember Ramirez had that. Um, yes, we're all set.
Great. So then we stand adjourned at 9:08 and the next city council meeting is currently scheduled to be held on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020, at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. Thank you again, everyone. Please stay safe and healthy and we stand adjourned. Good evening.